I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, any additions or deletions agenda?
No, sir.
None.
Is there motion to approve minutes from last public business meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Great. All right. This is quite a crowd for our adult county guardianship review board nominations this evening. Welcome Coach Bazarnik. On behalf of the county commissioners, we want to welcome everyone here this evening. This is a program that we've been doing, I guess, for six or seven years now for the annual baseball recognition event. Steve Bazarnik had an exemplary collegiate baseball career at Penn State University, and we're all fortunate that Steve moved to Allegheny County in 1971 and joined the faculty of Allegheny Community College. Soon thereafter, he became the college's first head baseball coach, and Coach Bazarnik started, developed, and leads ACM's nationally recognized and revered baseball program. Steve also serves as ACM's athletic director.
When you think about Allegheny College of Maryland, you think about baseball. You think about Coach Bazarnik. It goes hand in hand. For 49 years, generation after generation, he's turned out incredible people, incredible players, who's been very successful in this game we call life.
I've said this many times in dealing with Coach Bazarnik, how much he impacts young people and what he's done not only for this college but for the community, but more importantly, what he's done for kids individually. And I know I'm living proof of it because when I came here, I had two wonderful parents who did everything for me, and I was fortunate to have them. He, other than my parents, he's probably the person that's made the greatest impact in my life.
I met Steve Bazarnik in May of 1984. I was covering the district tournament, baseball tournament, at Allegheny College. After the game, he was the happiest, kindest man I believe I've ever met up to that point. And 35 years later, he still is.
I think I just learned from him by just watching. He led by example. He never asked you to do something that he wasn't doing. He just worked hard. He just always... And I'll tell you, this might sound very simple, but I think one of the reasons is he might be one of the nicest human beings you've ever met in your life. He's just genuinely a nice man. And I think that helped him as his baseball coach because he was a great recruiter. He didn't lie to kids.
Character, integrity, loyalty, a commitment to passion, a commitment to duty, a commitment to the students. He's an incredible individual. He's a Hall of Fame baseball coach. Forty-nine years of dedicated service to Allegheny College of Maryland and to the community.
Kind, generous, earnest, humble, and one hell of a great baseball pitch. Loves baseball. He loves baseball almost as much as he loves people. And I don't know that I've ever met anybody who cared, genuinely cared for people like Steve Bazarnik.
And everybody thinks that I recrediting more as a baseball coach, and obviously he's one of the greatest baseball coaches in the country, but I credit him more as a human being, as a person, what he did for me. But I also remember when my mom and dad died. And I might get emotional, but he was there for me as, like I said, Steve was my second dad. And it's really hard to say how thankful I am that God put me with Coach Steve Bazarnik.
I just would say the thing that epitomizes Steve best to me is the love of his family. He's not one to open up about himself. He finds himself to be the least interesting person in the world. And all Steve wants to ever talk about is you. When you're with Steve, you're the most important person in the world.
You're an incredible person. You're an incredible father, an incredible husband. It's just you're an amazing, amazing person.
I think nationally, he's known as a great, great baseball coach. But I'm here to tell you, he's a greater man than he is a baseball coach, and he's one of the greatest in the country for sure.
Hall of Fame coach fairly early in his career. He's won a lot of games, won a lot of championships. He's affected a lot of young people's lives, helped their lives become better. Baseball, he is the standard for which baseball begins, carries on, and ends in our area because he's just the best there is. And nobody teaches the game, loves the game, understands the game, and shares the game of baseball any better than Steve Bazarnik does.
Coach, 35 years ago, it was you and I that took that journey. Days after my retirement, you sent me a handwritten note. In that note, you said, "I just handed you the ball, and you scored a touchdown." Note, Coach, we scored a touchdown. Thank you. June 10th, 2019 is your day.
This is an Allegheny County proclamation to make Monday, June 10th, 2019, Steve Bazarnik Day in Allegheny County. And it reads as this: Stephen George Bazarnik has dedicated nearly 50 years of his life to Allegheny College of Maryland and its stellar baseball program. Head baseball coach Bazarnik started, developed, and leads ACM's nationally recognized baseball program and has won over 1,400 games. Coach Bazarnik has the distinction of being inducted into three collegiate halls of fame. Under his leadership, Coach Bazarnik's baseball teams have won nine district championships and played in the NJCAA World Series nine times. Coach Bazarnik has coached players who succeeded to become professionals employed in the major leagues, and Coach Bazarnik has brought and continues to bring positive national media attention to Allegheny County. Therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners, wish to highly commend Stephen George Bazarnik, highlight his exemplary life, and proclaim Monday, June 10th, 2019, as Steve Bazarnik Day in Allegheny County, Maryland, and encourage all individuals to reflect on his achievements and contributions that he's brought our community and Allegheny County and Allegheny College of Maryland and the lives of his many baseball players. Congratulations. And we do have a citation from Mark Widmire on behalf of the governor.
I've got a little story to tell you before I do this. This guy's always been Besenerek to me. Every time I refer to him, it's Besenerek. Just read his name, make up what you want. 1971, there was a trio that moved to Allegheny College. Linda Mellon, Bob Kirk, and Steve Besenerek. I'll call you Bazarnik. But I'm going to let him tell you the story about a fellow that we all got to know out there. We referred to him as Nut Nut. He won't tell you, but someday just ask him. The governor of the state of Maryland to Steve Bazarnik, greetings, be it known that it is on behalf of the citizens of this state, in recognition for well-deserved tribute to honor you as the head basketball coach for 48 years with Allegheny College of Maryland, leading to over 1,450 victories, guiding your teams to 23 Maryland JuCo championships, participating in an NJCAA World Series nine times. Fifty-three of your former players have gone on to be drafted and signed to professional baseball career. Contracts, as well as the people of Maryland, we join with our friends and players and many admirers in expressing our great respect, gratitude, and best wishes for continued success. We are pleased to confer upon you this sixth day of June. A citation from the governor, signed by Governor Larry J. Hogan, Lieutenant Governor Boyd J. Rutherford, and Secretary of State John Wilbissman. Stephen, congratulations.
Thanks, Jake.
Thank you, Coach.
Brett, do you want to say anything?
He's got his mitts. Before you're hanging.
Didn't do it. Well, the first words out of my mouth were, wow. I'll tell you what. People say the nicest things, and very, very fortunate. I've come to Cumberland a long time ago, and just people, you people are just too much. It's tough to keep tears away, but anyhow, it's been a great ride, and all of you people that, players, film was great, support's great, support Allegheny College has always been great. And I just thank you, and it's, as Phil Rosilius used to say, used to announce the Yankees after playing for him for, what, 10, 15 years, he's a holy cow. It's wonderful, and thank you so much. But I want to thank the county commissioners for this honor, and I really want to thank Brett, Ryan Hart, April Hickson, and David Jones for doing the work in the background. But it's hard to believe, it's been 48 years since Kathy and I came down from State College. And I tell you, we got here, loved the people, loved the area, and it just, the college was great, and we were just hoping, you know, we'd get a call back. And we did, and it was a positive. So here we are, but it's been a great ride. It's been a great ride. But people I need to thank, and I mean, this is just, when you start thinking about everything, there's a lot of, lot of people that have been part of us being and having the baseball program that we did at Allegheny College. And I mean, without the help and the people, the support, it just, it wouldn't have happened. But so when you honor me, you honor everybody that had a part in all that. Players, people, administration, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But anyhow, it's always been in us and we, not I and me. And that's, that's what this whole thing is about. And I really appreciate the support. But start with my family. Kathy's here today. Kristy couldn't make it, but never complained. 3,000 games, including the fall games at least. And I said, that's a lot of time. That's a lot of time. And always, always a warm meal. I'm going to let that out. But anyhow, the college community, ACC at one time, ACM now, they've always been so good to us. The administrators have supported athletics, in our case, baseball. Faculty, same thing, support staff, and our departments, maintenance and transportation. And we've had, I mean, a lot of help from that end as well. But anyhow, transportation wise, I'll just bring back a story. Couple of years ago, we were called up 90, was it 97, coming up behind Morgantown, whatever that road is over there. But anyhow, our linkage goes out in the bus. Lee Royce Sessner, he does a great job. We get the kids out, get them up on the bank, cars going by us 80 miles an hour, and that guy put the linkage together so we could get home that night. And just little experiences like that, and the support, the support. Dr. Bambera, Dr. Connor, you've done a great job in supporting what we do. Players, coaches can't go between the lines, and you need grinders, guys that, you know, get after it. And people that refuse to lose. And there are some people here today, all the players, were like that. And we, it's just, it's fun. They were tough. They were tough. Case in point, a couple of years ago, we were, we were one run away from going home and nothing else happening as far as the rest of the season was going. But we get to the top of the ninth inning, we're down one run, they're throwing the ball around after getting two outs, and they thought, hey, it's over. Well, it wasn't over. But we had a walk, a lot of us got a walk. Justin Leeder got a single to center field, and Chad Gordon hit a ball, gap shot, and both runs scored. And we get that game, we had to get through the bottom of the ninth, got through that, won the district, and went back to the World Series. So it's, games like that, and there were a couple of other ones too. Tommy Marines was in one game a couple of years ago. We came back at the end, but it's been fun. It's been fun. One other time, JR was pitching. We played Seminole, Oklahoma, and that's in the day when they were 75 and five, or whatever they were. And they had a pretty good, pretty good ball club, okay? They had two teams, one went out, one went out, and they played four games on a Saturday. So you could do that then. Now it's back to 56 games. But we ended up playing them one night, and it got late because the games before that day were running late. So I went out to take, I think it was JR, I think I took JR out, but it was 1:30 in the morning, and the sprinkling system came on. We had it all, and we were very fortunate to, they weren't real happy either because the next day, the team that lost that game had to come back the next day at 12 o'clock for middle Jordan. So it's, it worked out for us. But that was a run, that's that trophy right there. Those guys and, let's see, Rod? Yeah, Rod Smith here, he played on that team with JR. But anyhow, it's been, you know, been great that way, players, they're tough, they get after. But anyhow, the other thing I'm even more proud of, and we love to see everybody, we had six guys playing the big leagues, okay? We love to see everybody play in the big leagues, but that doesn't happen, okay? I always tell the kids, a stack of baseball cards like that, that's minor league players, okay? That means you need to get an education. Stack like that, okay, you got the big leagues. Stay there, you'll make a lot of money. But anyhow, education, education first, and a lot of our players were able to go on and do that. In fact, a lot of went on to serve either our country or our community. Timmy Piles, who fought for us, played back a number of years ago, of course, but he, Maryland State policeman, what, 30 years? Yeah, 30 years. And wow, he gave up himself for the community. And we've had, the boy that hit that double I was talking about a little bit ago, he ended up, he's with the DC police now. In fact, I think he came down through, when the naval thing happened down in Baltimore a couple of years ago, he came out of a helicopter and went down through that building. So I mean, we just, that makes it, that makes it, you know, get the educations and they're able to move on. But, and we've had, even some of the people who've been drafted have played in the big leagues from here. Steve Klein, Joe Beimel went to Duquesne, Klein went to West Virginia, Seepel, West Virginia, Belinda went back to Penn State for a little bit. So they were, they had their minds pointing in the right direction. So, but I know John Cruck had a great career, but he ended up, he was going to East Carolina, but ended up getting drafted, and things worked out for him. So, but anyhow, the other thanks I need to bring up is our assistant coaches over the years, and we've had a lot of them. And we couldn't have done without, and there's some here today that helped us. And it's great to have them come back and be part of the program, and they did a number. Along the way, Leo Mizony and Sam Perlaza spent close 14, 15 years. They needed a place to work out, so they came out and worked out with us, and then they just hung out for a number of years. Our players had big league coaches at this level, and you know, just a thanks to them for, you know, giving their time, but it was a good time, good time. And both those guys are top of mind, big league coaches at the time. I think Sam's still with Minnesota, so front office, whatever. And then the other guy, I'll give you a trivia question. What guy from the area that's got 23, 24 years with the, I'm not going to give it away, with the big league club, and he's as a coach, and he's never played one day organized baseball, professional baseball? Leo was out there, he was tough. Yes, JR Purdue, JR Purdue. And to be where he is now and do what he's doing, I mean, he's top of the line, he's learning to speak Spanish. When he was with us, I said, I'm going to do the big league stuff. Well, I said, talk to Leo maybe, because it was pitching. And then call everybody, and the athletic said, if you could speak Spanish, we could work it. Anyhow, Leo gets him in with the White Sox, and that winter, he went to winter ball in Venezuela, met his wife, and picked up the language, and he can speak Spanish better than I can speak English. But he's just, he's just done a great job. They called him over to big league camp. He's a roter now, he's not a, he's a part of a coach, but he's not with a particular team. They think a lot of, and anyhow, they, they said, bring him over to big league camp so he can communicate with some of their Spanish-speaking players. Great, great guy. Good job. There's a couple other people I'd like to thank real quick. City Parks and Recreation, I know Ruben Lee's does our field still, and, but he, that was back in the day at Jordan. Gene Mason and Deb Patek were doing it. And when we first came, I first came here, we had to go to Donahue Field to play. So every day, we'd be down there to practice, and we'd play down there for three years. And, but eventually, things worked out at the college, and it's really, really, really gotten, gotten better. And we thank David Jones for some of that too. The scoreboard we have now looks great, and just had a comment today from one of the former players, wow. But it's, it's a thank you to you. Also, the media, our paper, paper back in the day when we first came here was Suterke, right? And his buddy, of course, hung around a little bit, Van Robbe. But Steve Loose, hanging loose with Steve Loose. And then today, we got Mike Matthews, and a guy that I think could write any place in the country, any sports program in the country, whether it's college or a newspaper, and that's Mike Burke. And you saw Mike on there. He's a great writer. It'd be nice if he would get, I told him, get all your articles that you've ever written and put them in a book. People will buy it because he did a great job with that. See here, David Jones talked to you. There's two guys I just want to say something about before I sit down. But high school coach, I'm not going to say much, but great role model, Bob Melman, Milton High School, and I know you don't know him, but I'll tell you what, he got me turned on to coaching back in the day. And that, that was, that was great. But he was, he was strict, but he also said, have fun. Don't throw your bats. Like Yogi and I did back when we were in 10th grade. That was, we quit that real quick. And then I had a guy that I recruited, recruited me to Penn State, and a guy by the name of Don Keppler recruited me. I played for him, I was a freshman in baseball at the time, and then I helped him coach last year, I was up there in grad school. And just my thing with Don Keppler, knew the game, but he also knew how to handle people. And I think I got a little sum from him. But he was, he could talk to anybody, never talk down. It was always, you know, please, thank you. And this is a guy that also was a lieutenant, World War II, taught survival, and this was 1943 in Chapel Hill. And because he could handle people, they sent me to pick up somebody that at the time was the best, and still as far as I'm concerned, best hitter in all of baseball. And he was a little moody, but he went, picked him up, and Ted Williams. Ted Williams was in that camp. In fact, Leo Mizony's, Johnny Stain, his pitching guru was in that camp. But they played, Don Keppler was their coach, they played 40 games, and that was back in the day, they played because of the war, the morale, and all that good stuff. But anyhow, they even called Don when, if you remember, 90 years ago, Ted Williams had a tough time in the World Series, late 40s, and they called Don. Johnny Pesky, he's in the Hall of Fame too, shortstop, and he played on that team as well. But anyhow, had Don come up and kind of settle Ted Williams down a little bit. But just, you know, being around that guy was just, just amazing. And I owe a lot, I thank to him for, for that. But anyhow, you know, thank you all for coming. You're the greatest. I love you all. And you, hey, you've been great. Thanks to the county commissioners for this honor. And anyhow, practice is tomorrow morning at County. Keep you over there.
Hold on, Steve. You gotta. All right, all right. You've got to be on bail, like, we're not letting you off. Just stay on this side. There you go. Coach, I don't think there's anyone more deserving of this honor and having a day named after them than you have, and I think that the proof is, this is by far the biggest crowd we've ever had for one of these ceremonies, for sure.
Soul, hot dogs.
That's right. And so Coach Bazarnik joins Senator Jaiglin Bell, who is a baseball advocate, as well as baseball greats Lefty Grove, Bobby Robertson, Leo Mizony, and Sam Perlaza on our wall, as well as Bucky Shriver, who was honored for his work remembering the late Lefty Grove. So this concludes this part of the event. We would like to give a special thanks to Dr. Bambera, ACM president, for joining us today, all of Coach Bazarnik's former players for coming out tonight, and it's just a really impressive career. So thank you all. So everyone's free to go unless you want to watch the rest. Up to you. You can see your government in action.
I was going to say nights like this make me even more sorry I stunk at baseball.
That's right. We're only going to be about another 10 minutes, if you want to wait outside or do whatever you want, all right, but we will be just a few more minutes here.
April Hickson there, you know April, right here with the pink shirt, she's actually training as a cousin, but she just wanted, she taught brass and walked through karate. She's actually. Okay, sir.
Now that everyone's cleared out, onto the tax increases. That's a joke, okay. Moving to our action agenda, item number two is a budget amendment for the Western Maryland Scenic Railroad, Mr. Butler.
Commissioners, good evening. Item number two is a budget amendment for the Western Maryland Scenic Railroad, as pointed out and discussed at length today in the public work session that was held today at 4 o'clock. There is some major track maintenance that needs to occur in preparation for, for the steam engine, which will, as you heard today, will be operational in the end of July. So this is an appropriation that really does take, provide some TLC for the track main, or track line that goes from Frostburg to Cumberland, as was estimated by officials, it needs about 1,200 ties, and that is to the amount of about $90,000 plus weed spraying, plus bridge inspections, that is for a grand total of $150,000. After discussing with Frostburg and Cumberland officials, it appears as if there is an appetite to, to go about this together. So commissioners, I am asking this evening for your consideration of a budget amendment in the amount of $45,000. That will take, that will be the county's side of things, and Frostburg and Cumberland will be both taking further action with their mayors and councils at 22,500 apiece. So that would take care of the 90,000. We have also been assured by the Western Maryland Scenic Railroad that there is a public-private partnership that they are looking at that, to pick up the remaining 60,000. And so, again, commissioners, this evening is for the, for track maintenance only, this is not a, an additional appropriation to, to the Western Maryland Scenic Railroad, but will be taken care of, track maintenance in the amount of 45,000 is the county's portion.
Commissioners, is there any discussion? I know we discussed this at length in our work session.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great.
I think we are also going to ask to add that we try to see that this work will coincide with the steam engine coming online as well.
Absolutely.
So we're trying to monitor that carefully to make sure that they coincide one another.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, moving to our consent agenda and why everyone's here this evening, Mr. Butler.
Yeah, further making the, standing in as Mr. Nedbed, so item number three is the Senior Care System Annual Plan Authorization and Signature, item number four is the Allegheny College Adult Guardianship Review Board Appointments.
Is there any discussion? Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. So now we know Mr. Rudd will be taken care of. Sir, I hope someone does that for me one day.
There you go.
Mr. Rudd.
Rebuttal.
Nothing.
The gentleman from Green Street, Mr. Butler.
Commissioners, I do have one thing. So on June the 11th, and with board member Tammy Fairley here, and an appreciation also for Allegheny County Public Schools, there is a parent and student event for the launch of the Apprenticeship Maryland Youth Apprenticeship Program, that is, is going to be held at 5:30 at the Career and Technical Center, CCTE Auditorium. This is an important event, commissioners, as you know, Allegheny County Government, in partnership with, with the public schools, has been very instrumental in getting this, this youth apprenticeship initiative here into Allegheny County. We are one of the eligible employers of that program, as well as, I think we're up to about 10 different employers that are, that are currently providing opportunities for students this fall for the youth apprenticeship initiative. So again, Tuesday, June the 11th, at the CCTE Auditorium at 5:30.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Caprilli.
Just add one last time to thank Coach Bazarnik for his years of service to the community and to baseball under our area.
Quite a legacy.
Yep, very much so.
Commissioner Brody.
Sir, I do have a comment, I'm going to keep it fairly brief because I actually double booked myself, I'm going to be in lots of trouble tonight. With today being June 6th, it's the 75th anniversary of the D-Day landing, thank you, I wished as a child or a young guy, I would have recognized these guys a lot more than I did. As a kind of history follower, I wish I could say expert, but I am not, I did all kinds of reading on this word, thanks to a history teacher, I had a bell named Mr. Nixon, so as I raised my two boys up, I drilled it through their head and had them all prepared because it is what shaped the United States into what it is today. And these, these gentlemen surely are still owed a debt that can never be repaid, so thank them very much for what they did.
That's exactly right, and I'm actually wearing a pen tonight that my friend Jeff Hutter gave to me, and Jeff's been gone three years now, but it's a send for Churchill pen, V for victory, and, you know, with all of our D-Day 75th anniversaries, there's not too many veterans left, and even the youngest ones are in their 90s. So when you read the story, it was a wonderful article about Floyd Wigfield today in the Times News, and to think that so many years later, that the president invited him to the White House, invited him to accompany him on the state visit to, to see what he did, and many, many, many thousands of other young men did 75 years ago, and, and something that, you know, Jeff Hutter was, was half-British, I don't know if you knew that, his mother was English, and the gratitude of that generation of people that were alive during the war and, and had seen before American involvement and after American involvement, that doesn't go away, and I, that's why, like you said, Commissioner, it's so, so important to continue to teach history and our heritage and the sacrifices that so many men make and continue to make today for, for our country and the entire world, so thank you all.
Thank you for that.
Okay, we only have one person signed up to speak tonight, Mr. Kenneth Wilmot.
Good evening.
Sir.
I'm Kenneth Wilmot, I live at 5134 Amner, I just hear somebody's glasses. Anyway, Saturday is going to be a big day at our church out in Flintstone, as you know, strawberries are in, and we're going to have a strawberry fest at Millie Branch United Methodist Church. We have this every year, the same as we make apple butter every year, and everybody's The fest from 4 to 7, come out anytime you want, morning of day, it is beautiful out in the valley, it's just between two mountains, just between Irons Mountain and Warrior Mountain. We have a great time, you'll have, it's all you can eat, donation, you ain't got no money, you don't have to pay, we don't worry about money, it's all, it's already taken care of, and come on out and enjoy the fun, and it's a great fellowship, let me tell you, you meet a lot of new people out at all these festivals we put on. So, hope to see you all Saturday maybe, 4 to 7, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilmot.
Okay, that includes our meeting tonight, our next public business meeting will be Thursday, June 20th at 5:00 p.m., thank you.
How do you get there? At the intersection where the store is, you hang a right, if you turn your left, you go back underneath the 68, and you go back to Crumden, you don't want to go.